We'll call a meeting to order. Roll call.
Mayor Arnold?
Here.
Alvin Bev?
Here.
Alvin Decker?
Here.
Alvin Hudson?
Here.
Alvin Corbett?
He's on his way. Need to adopt the agenda?
Who we adopt?
Second. Motion second, any discussion, any additions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? How long do you think he'll be?
Ah, you know, he just, he just texted us he was gonna be...
Cause we're gonna be out of here about seven.
So maybe just a few months later, sitting in standstill traffic on I forty, that was at five twenty-six.
Oh, if he's on I forty, even a long way.
Probably from, you know, come from the airport. Well...
I don't know what I am, or... I think we get started. We got, we've got way too much to do today.
Yeah.
Alright, new business. We're here to discuss vehicular and pedestrian safety for Tyree Springs Road. Are you gonna present this to Jay sir?
I got, uh, Jason, he can weigh in if he needs to. Do we need to leave that on mute, or does it stay like that? Okay, so he can, you can hear us okay, Jason?
Can, I'm just leaving mine muted until I talk.
Alright, we, I don't, we, we put together some information, first of all, in your packet, I, I sent you an email that I had, I had sent to the, to, uh, the developers, both of them, and, um, basically tried to come up with a, a means of helping, uh, resolve some of our citizen concerns, and pedestrian, and pedestrian traffic safety concerns along, uh, the state route, uh, two fifty-eight, Tyree Springs Road, from South Palmer's Chapel Road to, uh, to the high school at Raymond Hirsch and, and Tyree Springs Road. And, uh, when we, when we approved the Lennar Homes, uh, we did ask them to put a sidewalk along Tyree Springs in front of their property from end to end, with a crosswalk, uh, just basically painted on the street for, for a crosswalk to cross the street. And then, uh, with...
Can I interrupt you?
Yes, sir.
How wide a sidewalk did you request?
Well, it'd be our normal standard five foot wide sidewalk. So, that we have in our, uh, you know, in our ordinance. The, um, then the, uh, when we were looking at good, all the planning commission, it, it approved the plans with stipulation that there would be a sidewalk that would connect, uh, all along their, I mean, from their property line, from the north to the south, all the way down to Lennar, which means they would have to go across a couple more properties to get there, and connect that sidewalk, and, uh, and they agreed at that, at that time to, to accept those stipulations, to, at least to my knowledge, I'm not sure if they really agreed to, but that's how we decided we would, we would require that. Uh, so then I had some, uh, I started looking at the, uh, impact fees, I thought, is there any way we could get traffic signalization, um, at South Palmer's Chapel Road with a crosswalk, uh, to help alleviate our morning rush hour traffic, and our evening, or afternoon rush hour of, of the kids, parents dropping off their children at the elementary school. It's really difficult for the, you know, them to make those turns and everything else, and the only way to really resolve that would be one of two ways, you either have a police officer, which we don't have the ability to do that, because we're so shorthanded on police officers, to have them out there during those time periods, or we put traffic signalization. And so, uh, I looked at the traffic signalization there, and then, uh, Jason Reynolds brought to my attention that we, we, we have left turn lanes at the Raymond Hirsch, uh, and Meadows Road intersection there by the high school, but we do not have protected turn lanes, which means we would have to up, upscale some of the traffic lights there to allow for left turn lane lights, so allow people to turn. Uh, you know, so, uh, we thought that would be a really good idea to have that there. And then we thought, well, uh, I think, uh, Seeger thought, well, is there a way we could connect it to the greenway, uh, which is our, you know, our bridge that comes over there and connects at Tyree Springs? If we could connect it, then that would bring a nice amenity to the communities that are along that path to be able to get on a sidewalk, and take it all the way down to the greenway, and get on our greenway going either, you know, left or right, or, you know, east or west, and, uh, just connect to that whole system, and we thought that would be a grand idea. So I, I started looking at how much would it cost for, uh, for these impact fees, that which would, this would improve not only for, you know, for the, uh, road improvements, but we also looked at it as being connecting it to the greenway would allow us to, to reasonably or rationally approve, you know, the, maybe, uh, to, uh, deferring the, or, or, or basically not charging for parks, and then of course, police and fire would have less concerns about, uh, traffic injuries and having to respond to those type of things, or pedestrian injuries crossing roads, or trying to walk around along that narrow road. Uh, so we thought it would basically touch all four areas that we have for impact fees. Impact fees for the two developments, eighty-nine units in the one, and, and Seeger's, I don't know many, we have...
Six hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
We were looking about six hundred and fifty thousand dollars there, between the two. Uh, we've talked to Lennar about theirs, theirs is just over a hundred thousand dollars. If they would be willing to prepay that upfront and, uh, and help out with this, and, uh, they seemed to indicate to me on the phone that they, that something that they would consider. Uh, they would prefer that we be the passer, that it was passed through to us, to the other developer, to, to, to do those improvements, and I have spoken with the other developer, the good old homes, uh, folks, and, uh, they've taken a look at it, we don't really know exactly what that extra cost would be, but I, I said if we could waive all those fees, if we could accomplish these three things, make the, uh, first of all, the most important would be the traffic light at South Palmer's Chapel Road and those cross, a crosswalk there. The second priority would be getting those, those turn lanes protected. Third priority is making that, that connection at the, uh, to the bridge from their, their, from their northernmost, uh, part of their property line. Uh, even if it costs less, if it costs them less, then, you know, they, obviously they could use it for their improvements, because not only are they have, they have to do this extra long sidewalk, they, they are gonna also put a crosswalk across from one side of their subdivision to the other. Uh, and that's why we wanted you to take a look at their subdivision, that we put in front of you, uh, you can see that it's two sections. One on the east side of, uh, Tyree Springs is, is more of, uh, more of a medium density residential units, and then on the west side of the road, you have a mixture of medium density and a little bit higher density, uh, uh, individual homes that they would be putting there, and they have some amenities in the, in the front with the barn that they were gonna renovate, and, and use some, use the barn for those type of things, so, uh, we think that, you know, one of the things we'd like to do is, you know, the road is narrow, so but being narrow on its own does slow traffic down, the wider the lanes are, you know, the faster traffic will go. If we could put a traffic light at South Palmer's, and they have a, and they, and they do, they were looking at putting on a crosswalk like we, we currently have at our, at our crossing, where the pedestrians would hit a traffic, would hit a button, and the lights would light up until, you know, to let traffic know there, there's somebody in the, in the crosswalk about ready to walk across the crosswalk, and that would help there, of course, the protected, uh, turn lanes at the other end would also help. So, that's pretty much it in a nutshell, we gave you both packages here, we gave you a, a handout to take a look, uh, at, at how we were laying it out with the different color codes on it. Jason, I know you didn't get a chance to see this yet, um, unless you sent it to them by email, but I don't, I don't know if you can see it. Not from here, you won't be able to see it, but, uh, we'll make sure you take a look at that Monday when you come in, um, and talk about that, but did you have anything else to add to that, Jason, as our engineer?
No, um, I agree with you, and seeing eye to eye with you on everything you're approaching, um, the developers would get through that, uh, didn't have a, really a lot of, to add to that, I think you covered everything from my side. Um, just to give a status on that, uh, we do have one of the traffic, uh, impact analysis studies that we received on the larger project, and I gave some comments back to them, they're gonna make a few slight revisions that'll support us a little better in these improvements, and then we're still awaiting the, uh, impact analysis from the smaller Lennar, uh, development that's, happens to be right at the South Palmer's intersection, uh, so that one's critical. But, uh, other than that, that's sort of the status from, from my side, and, uh, we're progressing as normal. And I'm just, uh, listening to you and those developers as, as far as how we're coordinating that.
Okay, um, so like I said, that was pretty much it for me in a nutshell, the, uh, you know, we'd have to, you know, the, the way I, I look at how we would waive those fees, that we would do a resolution, um, you know, authorizing the, uh, the, that these funds not be charged against these two developments, uh, as long as these, uh, they agree to these improvements that we talked about doing. Uh, and, and that's what I was gonna recommend, uh, for you for the board meeting tonight, I know you have a first reading on the, the larger development, and I thought if we could somehow, put, maybe put some kind of stipulation, or that we would, uh, that this is the route we wanna go, or if it's not the route you wanna go, if you just wanna either approve or not approve it as it is, that'll be up to you, but I, I'm open for questions, so, here we are, Jason's up here if he needs any. I've got Seeger here, who's been part of the whole process.
We don't have our, uh, traffic study conflict finished, correct?
Yeah, that's correct, I mean, Jason has made some comments, right, on, on, on the good old traffic study?
That's correct, I, I would consider it, uh, probably ninety, ninety to ninety-five percent, something like that, as far as what they submitted, given that, uh, I had, I wanted clarifications, a little more, uh, detail in some of their recommendations, and then there were a couple items that I added, there were six total. A couple of them were adding, uh, analysis that was not in there, they alluded to it and said it was, uh, probably needed. Um, for instance, the signal warrant analysis at, at that current three-way, uh, intersection with South Palmer's. Um, that was, it was alluded to, but not clearly stated, so they're gonna have to add that, and that will give us, uh, what hours of the day, whether it's one hour, two hours, four hours, or more, um, that the signal is actually warranted, um, and that, that'll make a lot of difference in how we proceed as a city, because regardless of a signal that's being there, we need to know how we want to manage that signal, um, outside of those hours that it may or may not be warranted for, for standard signalization. So, so they're gonna revise that, and, and that's a big part of what we're doing, but, but we have received no information on the Lennar and smaller, um, development. Now, it's less significant from the fact that it's a smaller development, but it's more significant being that it's adding a fourth leg to that, to that intersection, so that's, that's fairly critical. But, yeah, I, I don't see a big deal, we've talked with both of those, uh, developers and their, their designers, engineers, and, and they're progressing with both revisions in one development, and the traffic study by Reagan Smith on the second development.
Jason, can we incorporate our camera system at that intersection, and at the one at Raymond Hirsch and Tyree?
We would have to extend fiber when the nearest location is at the, uh, Summer County High School, up at the, uh, Raymond Hirsch and Tyree intersection is our nearest fiber connection, um...
But would, but there is access right there, if we got a camera there in this package?
Yes, that's correct, but, but the link is essentially just the internet connection is what we need, that, that internet wiring to be ran from the high school down to the elementary school intersection. Uh, you, you can, you can put all the same signalization, you put the cameras up, um, and everything would function the same as all of our other intersections, except being linked to City Hall, and being accessible on the internet, it is whether we run that fiber, uh, from high school down or not.
Right, like right now, Jason, we, we, we're putting a grid smart system, I think they installed it already today, or yesterday, at the thirty-one W Portland Road intersection, now there we do not have fiber. So that one'll just be connected to the internet, is that what you're telling me, how would that work?
No, we have fiber at that intersection, we've got fiber at, at all of our intersections.
All of them?
Yes.
So we should have to run fiber down?
So we have it at the high, we have it at the high school, then you're saying?
All of them.
No?
Yes.
Okay. So we could put, we're, we do, we do plan on putting a grid smart there, I mean, as we continue to roll this out, we're getting closer and closer to having all of our intersections, I've asked them to hold off on Raymond Hirsch and...
But if we're gonna do this, why don't we try to get all this at once?
Get that fiber down there too?
Yep. I, I'm, I'm saying that because a lot, a lot of days, I'll sit at the traffic signal on Tyree Springs at Raymond Hirsch for ninety seconds, and there won't be a single car go the other direction. You're just sitting there for nothing. So, I, I like the camera system.
Yeah, they do help, they help with the traffic, yeah, it does trigger it.
Were we looking at any turning lanes, or were we waiting on our traffic state for that, turning lanes into the subdivisions? And then, uh, wider, widen the road right there in front of the developments?
I don't, didn't, in the good old subdivision, it didn't recommend any turning lanes, did it, Jason?
Uh, that was one of my comments, uh, they essentially said that it was very close, that, that's called a lane warrant analysis, and, and they must have looked at that, but they didn't present the, the data, or the results, from, from that study. Uh, but they did have it in their discussion slash recommendations, that alluded to the fact that it's not required now, but that they would be required in the, some very near future, or some increase in volumes, but they didn't state that. So that's why I, one of my comments was, I wanted them to quantify, um, what the criteria is for, for requiring those lanes, and they will be adding that to the, um, traffic state.
Yeah, I think that's critical.
That's correct.
Traffic study or no traffic study?
Either that, or we're gonna be paying for it someday anyway.
I mean, you, you, if you go straight through there to Cedar Brook, you gotta turn lane thirty-one. So you're gonna have traffic that's gonna go all the way through there.
Yep.
Yeah, you're talking about the turning lane at, um, at...
Thirty-one and McCurdy.
Thirty-one and McCurdy, yeah, that's why we're putting that right turn lane in there, we haven't, you know, we've got that ready to go.
And, and if we're, if we're gonna make improvements out there for what's already existing, it's gonna be even more when this road cuts all the way through.
Yeah.
To add to that, they, they had some lanes that they stated were required, and I'm, I'm fairly sure that that would be to left lanes, the left turns, excuse me, into the, the project access. Uh, but the ones that were in question were the right lanes, or deceleration lanes, and those are, those are just as important. If they're warranted, then, then we need those as well, otherwise you've got a lot of breaking action, um, that would happen.
I would.
That, that may not be necessary.
You got any comment on this, Michael?
Just let everybody know who you are, and...
Michael Do, Do the Engineering. Yep, we, um, Gillian Fishlock did do a, a traffic study for this, and there are some recommendations that she had for each access, and the left turn lanes were warranted, um, and the right turn lane for the east side of the project was also warranted, but the west side of the project was not warranted. So the turn lane, the left turn lanes were definitely, that are warranted, and we are, uh, proposing those with this, with this, uh, request.
And a right lane for the east side, if that makes sense?
Yes.
I have another question for you while I got you up here. Uh, I've always been an advocate of connectivity, and I've tried to do some of that here, this has just never worked with our walking trails. Uh, now we're gonna connect Cedar Brook to this new development, which will give them access all the way to our greenway. The proximity to this last little section of Summerland right here, to this development, is there any way a sidewalk can connect from Summerland to this development? To give those folks access, and that would in turn give Graystone access, that they could walk all the way to the greenway on a sidewalk?
It's possible, we, we've not considered that with the developers yet, but we would need to cross over a stream, or possibly two streams there, so, you know, that, that would be the, you know, the, the sidewalk, it, I mean, it is a pretty, probably four or five hundred feet, I'm not saying that's minimal, but the crossings would be the expensive part on, on that one. So not, we've not discussed that, uh, yet with the developers, but something that we can definitely look into.
I wish you would.
And Michael, with the, uh, now, it looks, sounds like you may be able to make that Cedar Brook connection, did you have any other design for that property, that, was it four, five acre, five acres there?
Yes.
You're starting to come up with something there?
Um, we, we talked about that yesterday before, and, um, we actually, just since he just, probably an hour ago, and exhibit...
Oh, did he?
Yes, and so he tried to match it, to put it up, yeah, but...
Alright.
You got a chance for the, the actual bone, maybe we could actually, we could look at that, uh, but yes, it added four, five, six to life, um...
Okay. Alright, would be good for us to have from when we have our second reading of our ordinance.
And, and one thing to note on that as well, the, um, that's, that's gonna change the traffic study quite a bit as well, um, with having that, that exit out of the project, it, it could change even the lane analysis.
Uh, Jason, are you telling me that the traffic study didn't include a connection to Cedar Brook?
That's right.
Oh, yeah, that will change it. Cause you're gonna have a lot of through traffic right there.
It'll change a lot.
But it sounds like he's already got the left turn lanes in there now, so, I mean, it sounds like he's already ahead of us on that anyways. Uh, I guess the only thing would be exiting onto Tyree Springs, is, would that, would that need a, you know, a right turn, and a left turn coming out of there, I don't know. Is that what you're, is that what you're thinking, Jason?
Regardless, it needs to be in there, so, so that we can look at the results.
Okay.
Just so we can justify it to T-DOT, since Tyree, you know, that is a state road, so, uh...
I mean, even the cut, cut for like, to see where Tyree, T-DOT's coming from, you know?
Yeah, but like, yeah, and like Jerry said, uh, uh, we're addressing, he's addressing it with, uh, the detail in, uh, that left turn lane. But, uh, it's, it's gonna be, to their benefit to have it anyway.
We're a little bit off topic, fellas. Uh, this is something we ought to be discussing before our approval of this project. Right now, we're discussing whether or not we can get these improvements with walkability at our greenway. Kobe, have you got any comments?
Uh, no, we're, uh...
Just, yeah, if you just tell us who you are, and we're with...
Kobe, do you mind, if we're developing, we're developing it, I'm asking, you know? Um, we've looked at the sidewalks, and the, the question that we have really is just, we wanna see what the plan is to get those three years, uh, as long as they're driveway, and as long as we're not dealing with a ton of evens, we're happy to connect our side to the greenway.
That's where we're trying to go here, so. And, and you understand the issues with traffics, the traffic studies?
Yes.
And, and, and I, I didn't want, under the understanding that it didn't include the connection to Cedar Brook, and that will change the traffic study, cause there will be some through traffic there.
Sorry, um, I was just reading back through the traffic study, and we thought that we could get that property at the very beginning, and then it was, we're cutting and we're cutting and cutting. And, uh, and the traffic study actually shows the initial layout that we had that had the connection. So I believe the tra, and I haven't reread, uh, through this, the document that was done a few months ago, but I think, based on the layout that she has in here, it does show the connection to Cedar Brook, but I can, we'll, we'll make sure to get, have it updated one way or the other.
Who handled that, did George Welch handle that?
No, this one was done by, um, Gillian Fishlock.
Yeah, let's, let's verify that, Jason Reynolds, I want you to verify it too. I trust you, Michael.
Alvin Corbett, I, I know you came in just from this late, did you get, I don't know how far ahead I got on you before you got in here, is there any questions? On the sheet that we showed you, basically, there's three major projects I'm trying to get done, priorities, so...
Jerry, did I, did I hear you say that, uh, the, uh, left turn signal from that Meadows Road, it, it, where Meadows and, uh, Raymond Hirsch had on, and coming from the elementary school side, that there'd be a left turn signal there?
There, there is now, right, there's a turn lane, but there's, but we don't have the actual signal.
There's no signal, yeah.
That says turn left, yeah.
I thought I heard you say something about...
Yeah, that's what we were looking, that's what Jason had mentioned, it would be nice to have those as protected turn lanes. Especially being right there at the high school.
So you think it's doable?
I think it is, yeah, we need to, we need to verify it.
He probably doesn't have this sheet, does he?
Um...
Okay, did you get a copy of this, Kobe?
No.
Okay, I can give him a copy then. Nobody here from Lennar, I don't think, Michael can have it too.
Yeah, that is, like, oh, is it driveway?
Yeah, I think there's, there's probably some utility right away, Joe was here, he'd tell me for sure, but, uh, yeah, I think there's some utility right away there, whatever, it's gonna have to be looked at, and maybe Seeger's, oh, you can look at the, pull the plat for that area, you know, before our next meeting, and maybe we can get some answers for that.
And you do realize we're gonna expect this to be done first phase of development?
Yeah, I just said by the, I said by the end of the first phase is what I was hoping.
The sidewalk, Jerry?
The sidewalk, in particular, are you...
Well, the priorities would be the traffic signalization, we gotta help, we gotta help with motor vehicle traffic there. The left turn, protect the lanes, certainly we'd like, that, that, I think would be our second priority, and sidewalk would be my, our final third priority, if it's at the end, if it's, you know, somewhere middle or towards the end of their first phase, I'd be okay with that. I don't think we should get into two and three or four phases without having some sidewalk out there for people to use.
It certainly helps us Lennar to do it in phases, that's what we do, Seeger, in having, especially now, there's a, a pretty big financial impact, like doing it day one, we'd like to do it kind of in stages, but that's what we...
Now, Lennar is just to participate in part of this too, or that?
Right, the, the, the plan is for Lennar to, to just pay theirs upfront, and then we'll pass it through to the other developers, so that they have the funds to be able to, to do the project, but like I said, our first, if you heard me, there, the first pro, phase would, my first priority is getting that traffic light in, second one would be to protect the turn lanes, and then, then the sidewalk connection would be our, our final connection to the whole thing.
What are our impact fees, these paid?
Well, usually paid as they, as they draw, uh, permits for the, each single family home. So, if, you know, they're doing a lot of this on the front end, and so, and they would just have to, I think, I, I would do a resolution, and they could just show us what their costs are, and we would just keep, you know, deducting it, and so they, they're maxed out enough. Of course, if it's over that, which we've talked about, we're not sure yet, we got, we gotta, they're gonna have to, I've asked them if they could do the engineering for this, and to be able to give us some, some, some costs, what do they think it's gonna cost for the whole project? Uh, certainly if it's under, then I think it's, it's a wash, if it's over, then that's probably another conversation. We'll have to have with them to see how far they can get, at least knocking out the priorities, one, two, and then see how far we can get with the whole thing, so...
Can you give us some estimates, some cost estimates on this, looking at this temporary layout? Can you kind of put a little something together?
We can work with, yes, or we can work with some contractors and, yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
If you're gonna use this as a greenway extension, is that five foot sidewalk wide enough?
Well, it's gonna be narrower anyways with the, with the rightaways, like you said, without buying a lot of rightaway, which would bring a lot of cost to you.
Yeah, and there's some challenging topo in there too.
Yeah.
If we're gonna do, do them aside, drainage, just, you'd be able to do it like a greenway walkway, or are you gonna have to do it like a state sidewalk?
I, I don't know, I mean, they're gonna have to look at it, see, I mean, I'm thinking if they could do it like in the wood bridge things that we have, you know, how we, we cross some of the water areas with our bridges, if that's a possibility or not, I, I, they'll have to look at that too.
State road, that, you start playing at the ballpark.
Yeah.
Well, it's our part, you know, the state route ends at, at Meadows and Raymond Hirsch, so from, from the greenway up to Raymond Hirsch is on our land, and so the state can stay out of that, so...
But from there...
But when they cross Raymond Hirsch and start heading that short section across that, I'd call it the greenhouse.
Yes, but that's...
That property there, that, that, the state would probably wanna take a look at that.
I saw him out there working on his bridge the other day.
Yeah, I, I think it needs to be per state's back.
Yeah.
And T-Deck's gonna have some involvement too, so, there's some wheels that need to start turning.
So if you go state's back, you may be building a concrete wall, you start doing that, it's gonna beat that Dollar Mountain looking at, they're pretty fast.
It could, that's why we need to know what, what we're looking at, but, but it would be, I mean, I think valuable to the community, um, and I already, as you, I know you've probably already gotten feedback from one of the, our former council members, uh, who thought maybe this was, you know, this was a viable plan, something he could, he thought was okay.
No, he didn't tell me that, he was telling me how terrible I was for voting for it before.
Oh, okay, alright, well, that's, he did send that back, I mean, he'd like to see the, the lanes widen, but we know how challenging that would be to widen it all the way down, but for, certainly if they're gonna put turn, some turn lanes in, that, that would be helpful.
We, we, this project goes through, that speed limit from one end to the other is going to be dropping down to, um, like a residential area.
It's thirty-five now through there, um, so I'm not, that, that's the main connector road.
Thirty-five parlor, it goes to thirty.
Thirty, I think, before you get, yeah.
Before you get down to the school, Raymond Hirsch.
So the crosswalk, everything that they're talking about, it may have to be dropped, that's twenty, twenty-five.
Thirty, I think, for our state route. Yeah, we have, we have that now, I mean, it stays thirty.
Two schools, two schools, and then it's just a big network.
Well, there is during school hours now, there is a protected schools, uh, area in there, so...
At Meadows, but not at South Palmer Chapel.
We voted to allow it to be done, at South Palmer Chapel.
We voted, we did that, but the state has to approve that.
State has approved.
The state has approved it, I asked Anthony about that today, he looked, he was deer in the headlights, so he wasn't sure, so I got a re, I had a legal update this past week, and they, they mentioned about, they mentioned that in the legal update, that Summer... The state has approved it, I asked Anthony about that today, he looked at me during the headlight, so he wasn't sure, so I gotta re, I had a legal update this past week and they, they mentioned about, they mentioned that in the legal update that Sumner County was approved. I have to look at the details of that and, and, and.
So we've got that in our pocket too.
If we need to, I think, having a traffic light would definitely slow the traffic down, you know, there in that area, uh, that would be helpful to have, so. Having it, being a school zone there, how important is it there? I mean, certainly it's, it's important in front of the school, there's no doubt about that, um, so, and that's where it is now, so. Our biggest, like I said, our biggest problem there is people not being able to turn, you know, take their kids to school, if they're coming from the north, they can't turn because of, because of traffic coming and.
If you're coming from South Palmer Chapel, you can't turn either way.
Yeah, yeah, but they can, they can, they, it's so tight there.
So Kobe, Michael, y'all are on board?
Number one priority.
Do some legwork on this? Board? What's your feelings?
I think it's, uh, I'd like to compliment Jerry, your, your efforts on, uh, the working with the developer, the spirit which we approach, it's the way that community development needs to work. Where we fig- figure out a way to solve problems before they occur.
Yeah, I ask myself every day why I'm here.
I bet you do feel it, but nonetheless, I compliment you on that, I'm glad to see that.
All right, thank you.
I like just being able to use some of the money that we receive, put more in the affected area than just spreading it across everywhere.
Yeah.
Spend a little more attention to the affected areas.
Exactly.
And then the rest of it will figure itself.
I think this is actually a good use for the impact fees, because that's the area that it's impacting.
Right.
We take the fees, but then we don't get the people in that neighborhood.
Right.
Uh, you don't see.
Mowers and vehicles and that type of thing, yeah.
All right, any other comments? We're gonna move on, we're gonna have a long night, I'm afraid. Next item is to discuss the order of business.
Well, uh, sir, on, on this one, um, you know, I have to re-discuss at the last meeting about possibly doing a quarterly, uh, comment, public comment period on your agenda. Went back and again, re- looked at the ordinance and, and, and the order of business is actually in our ordinance and it's, it's specific. And so Derek and I looked at it and I, I, we made, I made some changes to the ordinance, uh, some things that we needed to add to it, that was important, like we didn't used to have the pledge of allegiance in there, but we do that, so we, we wanted to make sure that was put in there in the ordinance. And then, um, and then of course you can see the communication from the mayor and then Alderman City Attorney to administrate us, we thought we'd add that. Uh, and then you got the consideration of resolutions and consideration of ordinances, these are, these are the things we've been doing, purchasing other business, discussion items, other information. And then we put that public comment in there just cause that was, was brought up and it was, it was mentioned only quarterly, so we put January, April, July, October.
Let me ask you a question.
Go ahead.
You had a public meeting last night, correct?
Yes, sir.
How many people were here?
There wasn't on the board, two.
Three.
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 I missed one of them.
Two of them are here tonight.
And I say you forget about public comment.
Well, I'm just, I mean, we're just laying this out here for you as, as, as how it would look in an ordinance form, that's, then you guys can take it from there, but bas- basically, under community meetings, uh, we've mentioned again, uh, we, we thought we should take out the shall. Um, you know, then periodically by resolution, establish a time, I mean, we thought we should, maybe should take that out, some of this stuff, and then just cleaning it up a little bit. Uh, we talked about in the, in that community meeting thing, that after citizens speaks or time runs out, citizens will step away from the podium to allow for the next speaker, board member may or may not respond to a speaker for further clarification.
So you had to write a whole description for this?
Only within the, only within the underline, the rest of it, we, the cross out, the ordinance is already there, we were just trying to strike out things that we didn't think was important, uh, to, to be in there and, and put in there what we thought was most important, based on what we've been doing. So if, 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 if anything, we do anything, we, we need to amend the ordinance, at least, uh, the, the order of business. If you wanna keep section one, one oh eight the way it is currently, we can do that, we've, we've not done that in my nine years as your city manager, we've not, uh, called this community meeting, but we, we have the ability if we want to.
Well, obviously, there were some things like the pledge of allegiance and communications that we need to have in there because that's how we conduct our meetings.
Right.
As far as I'm concerned, this looks great, except I'm gonna put a line through number seventeen.
Okay.
And the board can do whatever they wanna do.
Okay, well, this is just a discussion period, so I'll let you guys discuss it amongst yourselves.
If I'm not mistaken here, in the years I've been on this board, which has been more than two, uh, we got a thing up here number eight, public hearings and delegations, if anybody has any business they wanna conduct with the city, uh, they have a timeframe that they can submit a request to the office and get put on the agenda to, you know, to speak to the board. We haven't had anyone that I can remember ever doing that, but when, in the past, when we tried to have these public forums for people to come in and address the board, it has not been a productive means. And it's only happened a couple of times, now I'm talking about over a thirty year period of time, so I don't understand, and I know people call me from, I know they call all of you from time to time and talk to you about things. And I, I mean, I've encouraged them to come to the, up here and talk to people about it, people don't wanna do that, they wanna call you at home and tell you their problems and I always come straight up here to Jerry and say, Jerry, I got a phone call and this is what it was about. And within a day's time, we've got their, their thing answered and it's done, so.
How does it work, Mike Wall? You call me, I call him.
So, I mean, but I agree with Mike, I, I thank you, I'll take that seventeen off and leave it off.
Yeah, I would think that, uh, if we were an organization that, uh, limited participation, uh, it would be really essential seventeen would, but we've probably got more ways, uh, to communicate than any community I know of. Uh, when you think about it, when, when you think about, not only do we have that special app for any kind of consideration, people have, are upset about need immediate help, like something broke, have participation in that. The Twitter, Facebook, those, uh, social media accounts are all available, we keep track of them and we monitor them. Uh, the, we have all of our, the way we operate as a government, it would, it is a citizen-led government, doesn't look like it sometimes because, but think about it, this board right here is a legislative body. If you, if we operated like, uh, old-time cities would be, then we would be hashing out everything up here on the board, but we've got all of our citizens on the leader services board and, and quality people and the planning commission and board zoning appeals and all of the boards that we've got, probably forty or fifty citizens that volunteer. And we, we almost always, our legislation is derived from their recommendations, citizen-led recommendations. And that's true in, in a lot of other cases too, uh, the way we operate our parks is we get feedback through the parks, the leisure services board and we get that from the people that are administering the sports. So that, uh, we truly do have a citizen-led, uh, uh, government and, and almost all the important things, like the purchase of the vibrant property, came out of the citizens' recommendations. So, uh, so, so they said, we're not limited, and then we've got the, the land use plan that we do. Uh, Tennessee is really, really good about making sure we do a land use plan and twenty-five year plan, because without it, we, we would really be in a mess. Uh, transportation-wise, road-wise and so forth, and, and we've got all of those, all of those different ways, in addition to that, we go the other step. We contact, uh, a lot of, a lot of our citizens with a lengthy, if, if you've never seen one of these forms, citizen survey forms, get a good look at it, it's a lengthy, comprehensive form about every aspect, they give you an examination like you're going for a, uh, going in the hospital. I mean, that, it's, I don't know how many questions there are, but I was going through till the night, and, and all of those citizens reflect our views and statistically, we are, we are among, and we're judged and compared to ci- cities all over the United States of similar size, and some a lot larger than us. And, uh, and we take that survey and we put it, we go to the budget meeting and we sit down with all of our management staff and we, we use what the people have asked us to do and incorporate that into our annual plan about what we do in the city, what, what kind of com- what we, what we do about improvements, sidewalks and, and future sk- schedules. So I can't, I don't know whether we've missed an opportunity anyplace to limit anybody, in addition to that, we're all available twenty-four hours a day.
We have, we, we've not limited anybody, John, we have suspended the rules and allowed people that weren't citizens to speak, I'm sure we will be doing that again tonight.
No.
We do, we do.
To that point, I, I had somebody call me today and they were, uh, no, you know, they, they called here and they said, no, you cannot speak.
I can ask you guys to suspend the rules, and we have done it, for every time we've been asked, we have, we have done it.
I know, I know, but you have people then that decide, well, am I going, because if I can't say anything.
We have done it every time we've been asked to.
I understand, but they were told no, so.
Well, you can correct that for them.
And, you know, on, on the, the public hearings or delegations, if, if that's a mistake and that's limited stuff that's on the agenda, right? They can't just come in, if they got another issue.
They can request to be put on the agenda.
Yeah.
And speak to us in a public hearing.
Yep, we've not, we've not done that, public hearings usually come as a result of the second reading ordinance.
Right.
Or special resolutions.
We've had, when, when we, when we had problems with selling the football field, don't you remember, Tony Porter got a special.
Yeah, I mean, you, you certainly.
Some of the people involved had.
Yeah.
Citizens were involved because of, you know, the separation of schools was a touchy thing for that, we had them come in and speak to us, a lot of them did, so.
Usually you do that as the, the particular topic comes up, you make, if, if there are people to, to have something to say on a particular topic, you have, uh, made a motion, uh, to sustain, to suspend the rules temporarily and to go allow public speaking, but that takes a majority of the vote at that time to do that, which is fine, it's, that, that works just fine for us. I, I'll do this however you want, we're just trying to find the right solution for you all.
I think all those other things you, you fellow mentioned are, are good, you know, and the, the, we allow, you know, pu- public comment through different ways, but I don't understand the, the, you know, the hesitation to add one more to it, I mean, we don't limit, we have, we want to keep this off of there, so I don't.
I think I can, I think I can help you with that, like, before, uh, I'd say probably about, up until the middle of my term as mayor and these two terms, we had, we had a, uh, conditions were a lot different for you, if you served in government. Uh, we had fights in the hallway, we had, uh, people calling channel four and five and, and saying, well, you know, telling them a big long lie and they'd come up here and then they'd stir up a crowd and the crowd would come. And they, and they would, they'd be a hundred people here and a hundred in the hallway, we had some of that, and it was just what I call political sport, it's a lot of fun to stir up stuff, it's a lot of fun to torment elected people, but what it did was give us a bad reputation.
Every citizen of the city shall be entitled to speak for three minutes concerning any item in city government.
So, 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 just to get out of your way, uh, so, as, as long as people had, know that there's a way to do that, that might be the, and way to get, to say what they have to say and if they're, it's important about them, about to do that. Uh, and, uh, that's, that might be a solution, but I, we, I'm, I'm a, I would not like to see us revert to a, where people did it just for the sport of it, what I call sport, but it's just.
Well, we're not voting on it tonight, Jerry will bring it before us and at that time.
Well, I just, what, I can revise this, uh, however you want, if you guys wanna send me your recommendations or talk to me about it, uh.
I don't think I need to send you my recommendations.
I think I know, I, I need, uh, so the order of business, I mean, other than taking out seventeen, which, you know, we, 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 you know, we, we can bring it back to you.
I don't think you can take that out, because we don't, we don't, we haven't had a vote on this, I mean, I know Alderman Corbett's pretty passionate about this and I haven't heard from everybody up there and everybody may not feel the same way I do.
All right, well, I'll tell you what, then we'll, we'll present it as is at the September meeting and if, if there's any amendments to be made, at that time, you guys will make that decision and we'll make the amendments as requested.
Yeah, sounds perfect.
Before the second reading and then the amendments will be added to the second reading and then we'll get it squared away, however you would like the wording to be.
Jerry, essence is perfect.
Okay.
Uh, uh, in essence, I don't think three times a year or quarterly is gonna be enough, should be every meeting, but reality and, uh, theory is different. And I don't, I don't want the, the podium to turn into hit point house.
That's where it's going.
I mean, that's, 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 that's a chance you have.
Right.
And other, other cities, some do it, if it's done in the correct and proper manner.
Right.
I'm for anybody that's gonna speak, when it gets done for the wrong reason and just, uh, uh, exercise your grievance just because, um, you couldn't, you couldn't, some people, you know, you can't make camp. And I've seen on, online and some other things, and that's usually, a lot of those people end up showing up every week to bring up the same thing.
You know how you stop that? You do like I did a year and a half ago, you hit delete.
I've done that. I had to delete.
Well, well, actually, we'll bring this to you at the September meeting and if there's, uh, obviously, uh, there, there's possibility, there's gonna be some amendments to it, I just, under section one, one oh eight, community meetings, I just, um, we, we'll have to think about that, how, how best is to resolve that issue, uh, I, I think there's important information in there that we need to encapsulate and keep, but I don't think we should have this board of mayor and Alderman shall periodically by resolution, which never has ever happened, uh, is, we probably should get rid of that language some way. Maybe it says the board of mayor and Alderman may, you know, by a voice vote at their meeting, allow for community meetings, like, I mean, that may be something we can come out with, I can come up with some language there, but I don't wanna do that yet, so you actually.
You spend way too much time.
I know. I know, but I wanna make sure we tell, we do it right, right now, I gotta turn here and just gonna make sure I do it right, so.
Well, I think that's what we did, where we let, it's not under special circumstances, we waived that, uh, I think that's what we did.
I'm gonna come up with a secondary language, just in case, at the next meeting, I could have you at least look at it to see what you think of it.
All right.
As a possibility. Will you work up something? That would be great, and get it to me before.
Oh, no, now we got an attorney involved.
We're gonna call them.
But I think we also need to establish, I, I think what John is asking here, like tonight, I mean, when, when somebody calls up and says, can I speak on it, on the agenda, we would say, well, that's not a public hearing, but, you know, you could at the second reading, you know, uh, we can say that, but.
No, 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 I, with this people, our residents?
They're not, they're not citizens, they don't live in the city.
Well, you've been here when we have suspended the rules.
I told them that, but they, they were out, they called the city and were told no, they didn't speak. Well, I said, well, you know, I mentioned that we've done it before, likely we would do it again, Mr. Wilson, I mean, I've kind of already made other plans.
But they know, isn't.
Well, I'm, I'm assuming that they called the city and, and asked that question and legally, they're not, so the city told them correctly, they should have called you first.
But even still, at the sec- if it's, if it's related to an ordinance, at the second reading of the ordinance, they need to know when they can come, like I, I, if somebody was asked, I'd tell them, this, this is the time to come, cause this is when you can actually speak. Well, on the issue, but I didn't get that call, that come from, must've came into the office or something.
It's a, it's frivolous and foolish, we, 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 we would like to have the option of turning it down, obviously.
Right, right, I, that's right.
With Jerry, your door's always open, so if they.
Yes.
Can come see you and you think it's, uh, big enough for to bring it to us, you always do.
Yeah, I, I pretty much do, so I, I.
Works resolve before it ever gets here.
Right, right.
So that's, that's my thing.
Yeah.
Okay, so you just.
On that issue, I talked with, uh, the lady that called and I told her for second reading she could come, she said she spoke with someone that told her no, but I told her for second reading, public hearing, that's the process, protocol. I don't think coming was the issue, I think it was speaking.
Yeah.
I told her it was second, it was second reading.
Yeah, second reading of any ordinance, they can speak.
No, this morning I told her.
They can sign up to speak.
I think this happened earlier in the week.
Did it, yeah, I don't know.
All right, any other discussion? We'll get us a little break before the next one, where's Jared?